Good evening, the meeting of the school committee for Monday, July 19th will come to order. Roll call vote please, Madam Superintendent.
Mr. Abrazei?
Here.
Mr. Barros? Ms. Cardelo?
Here.
Mayor Di Maria? Ms. Lambert?
Present.
Mr. La Monica? Ms. Lewis?
Here.
Ms. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Panerisi?
Here.
Ms. Sarny?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here. Okay. Eight members present, we have a quorum. Ms. Lewis was a student rep, she is attending remotely. So if we could all rise and flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next order of business is reading of the records.
Move away the reading as written.
Okay, so the motion has been made for favorable action to weigh the reading except as written. Roll call vote please.
Mr. Abrazei?
Yes.
Mr. Barros?
Yes.
Ms. Cardelo?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
La Monica, oh, Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarny?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, eight in affirmative, you have moved favorable action and accepted the record as being placed on file. Madam Superintendent, next, the item of business please.
Yes, thank you, Roman numeral four is public comment.
Make a motion to open public comments.
Second.
Okay, motion's been a second until open public comment, a roll call vote please.
Mr. Abrazei?
Yes.
Mr. Barros?
Yes.
Ms. Cardelo?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarny?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, eight in affirmative, we have open for public comment. Do we have anybody from the public that's in queue to speak? Is there anybody in the queue to speak for public comment?
Do not see anyone at this moment, but I would just wait one more.
Yeah. If we just give it a little more time, we were expecting a person or two to call in, who we called earlier for the information to do so, so out of courtesy, we'll just give it another minute or so. So thank you for your patience. Okay, it's been a few minutes, no one's called in.
Make a motion to close public comments?
Second.
Motion made a second to close public comment, a roll call vote please.
Mr. Abrazei?
Yes.
Mr. Barros?
Yes.
Ms. Cardelo?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarny?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, eight in affirmative, you're on the negative, you have closed public comment. Next item of business please.
From a numeral five is the report of the superintendent, as usual. Item number one is the superintendent's update. Just allow us one minute. Alright, so it has been a busy and energetic July for us here in EPS, as our robust summer programming has been off to a really great start. I do look forward to sharing some details with you about that during tonight's update. Also during the update, we'll be discussing our school reopening, or our school opening schedule, announcing two fantastic leadership additions, and informing you of the details of a few competitive grants that EPS has been awarded in the areas of STEM, middle school curriculum, and academic recovery. I will also be introducing you to the talented interns who are working with us in the administration building. And finally, I will talk a little bit about our ongoing and fast-moving preparations for our full return to school in August. So, to answer the question I know we've been getting, that is the best question to get at this time of year, which is when does school start? This slide outlines the opening schedule for all of our grade levels. Our students in kindergarten through 12th grade will have a half-day of school on Tuesday, August 31st. Students in grades K through 12 will have full days of school on Wednesday and Thursday, September 1st and 2nd. And there will be no school on Friday, September 3rd, or on Monday, September 6th, which is Labor Day weekend. All students, including those in our pre-kindergarten programs at the Adams and Webster Extension, will report for school on Tuesday, September 7th, at which time the 2021-2022 school year will be fully underway. The last day of school, if anybody is wondering, will be on June 15th if there are no snow days, June 23rd if there were the maximum or five snow days. We will be sharing with our teachers a complete list of all our major religious holidays that might impact a student's ability to attend school and/or complete assignments on a particular day or date. I know that school committee member Samantha Lambert has brought this up in the past, and understandably so. So we certainly want to do whatever we can to eliminate any confusion or inappropriate situations over important holidays that our students and families must celebrate or adhere to. So even though those dates are also on our calendar, we'll be sharing a more comprehensive list with our teachers that let them know what students, you know, what their limitations may be on those days that they are celebrating religious holidays. So our new and improved summer programming is, again, like I said, well underway, and I can't say enough about the incredible effort that our teachers and our administrators and staff have made to really bring meaningful and enjoyable offerings to our students. The academic and enrichment programs have been very varied, inclusive, engaging, you know, and they sort of demonstrate what we can accomplish when we commit resources to high-quality programming, put our faith in our amazing staff, and develop partnerships with leading organizations. So in these regards, the summer of 2021, I think, is pointing us in the direction that we want to move as a district. Everett High School's approach to summer has been very aggressive and far-reaching. There are remote and in-person options for our students, and social-emotional learning and support has been emphasized at every turn. We have programs for English learners, classes for credit recovery, and innovative programs offered in partnership with the Three Point Foundation and the Boston Design Academy. So to give you a specific feel for what is happening at EHS, I quickly wanted to shine a spotlight on a program called Elevating Agricultural Technology. It is for students in grades nine through 12, and it is offered through partnership with Boston Design Academy and the Timothy Smith Network. The students are paid a stipend to work on innovative smart technologies specific to urban agriculture, in tandem with growing their own gardens. And during the nine-week program, the students are exposed to cutting-edge software, high-end laptops, and robotics. And actually, I have today here some plants that they left for the school committee to see that are some of the, you know, fruits of their labor. We have also partnered with the Three Point Foundation and its summer, free summer program that integrates project-based learning and activities. So specifically, students in grades five through eight have been participating in a junior shark take program that combines technology and social-emotional learning. EHS also has spots for 200 incoming ninth graders to take part in a free math, reading, and writing readiness program in partnership with the tutoring leader, Libius Prep. So this features proctored pre- and post-assessments and 10 one-hour sessions, five each in math and ELA. Interested students should contact Mr. McCarthy as soon as possible, as we do hope to have a maximum participation in this valuable opportunity. I know an email has already been sent out by Mr. McCarthy, but for any students who are listening, who are incoming ninth graders or any families, if you have not heard about this incredible opportunity, please reach out to Mr. McCarthy. EHS is also offering an algebra virtual reality course in August called Prisms of Reality. So this is an immersive learning experience entitled Pandemic by Prisms, which illustrates the underlying mathematics of a viral outbreak. So during this innovative program, students are physically experiencing the growth rate of a virus in a food hall and join a task force. And then they visualize the mathematical pattern that underlies the spread and touch and move to physically internalize what this multiplicative growth looks like. In early August, we do plan on assessing all of our programs, partnerships, and initiatives to think about what we want to scale up and/or adjust for next school year. But we are working from a really strong starting point, and for that, I want to thank everyone who's worked so hard to bring these programs to Everett High this summer. Turning our attention to K to eight, we also have expanded offerings here with our summer academic enrichment, going from just one school, which was the previous practice, to four schools, the Caverian, Lafayette, Parlin, and Whittier. In addition, we're offering a variety of one-week camps in music, art, chess, yoga, and fitness and sports. And this slide shows some of the sports camps that have been led by Crimson Tide coaches and the EHS Athletic Department under the guidance of Athletic Director Tammy Turner. Overall, we have between 550 to 600 students attending the academic sessions at the four K to eight schools, each of which has a summer site coordinator and a team of EPS teachers to provide instruction. And as we would expect, a large percentage of our summer students attend the same school during the summer that they would during the school year, which I think demonstrates why it is so beneficial to have programming at multiple schools and at students' home schools. For obvious reasons, families do prefer to enroll their children into programming at their home schools. So as much as we can expand these offerings in the future, we absolutely will. Instruction is being offered in ELA, math, science, and social studies, as well as extras in areas like technology and physical education. There are recess periods, as well as free breakfast and lunch. And genuine value is really being placed on fun, interaction, and reconnection, which is going to be our theme for this upcoming year. In visiting our schools, me and members of central administration have all been in agreement that the summer vibe is exactly as what we would hope it would be. Students are learning, but they are also engaging in fun and creative activities that are completely suitable for summer enrichment. Lastly, we have also launched a very successful partnership with the Everett Haitian Community Center. The program is based out of the Parlin School, and 51 students from throughout the district have been enjoying classes in dance, music, and French. It is an honor to have the EHCC and Director Merlin de Rosier taking an active role in our schools, and we certainly hope to continue to build upon this sensational partnership in the future. So on this next slide, you will see two exciting updates to share regarding our leadership team. Veteran leader and administrator Kelly Ann Cooney has assumed the Director of English Learners, while Corey McCarthy is the district's first-ever Chief Equity Officer. Kelly is joining us after establishing herself as a leader in the field as EL Director in Nantucket, Southbridge, and Fall River. Kelly emerged from a strong pool of candidates who underwent the full range of the district's enhanced and robust hiring process. And her experience as a teacher, a mentor, curriculum developer, and team leader for 20 years were undeniable, so we are very thrilled that she is beginning her next chapter here in Everett. You know, serving as the Director of ELs is a privilege, and more than a quarter of our students are English learners, which is a fundamental strand of our district's vibrancy and uniqueness. So I will say with confidence that this role and this individual, I think, are ideally matched, and we look forward to seeing what the future holds for the Department of English Learners under Kelly Ann's direction. And Kelly is actually, I believe, she's on this call, joining us here today. So she wants to wave and say hello, so welcome, Kelly Ann. Kelly succeeds in Augur, who remains with the Everett Public Schools, and recently transitioned into the role of Director of Remote Learning and Instruction, where she will steer us in all of our curriculum, professional development, instructional, and technology endeavors moving forward. As again, we're not going to leave some of these best practices behind, but hope to integrate them into our curriculum moving forward. While many of you already know Corey from the tremendous work he has done for us last year as Vice Principal of the high school, Mr. McCarthy is our new Chief Equity Officer, which brings the EPS in step with what many large organizations and institutions are doing to address the large-scale issues of inclusion, opportunity, fairness, and success. There is growing widespread agreement that equity officers are a necessary way to build trust and legitimacy. And in Corey, we definitely feel like we have someone who will put our most valuable and sustainable ideas and objectives into practice. You know, we all know he's motivational, creative, energetic, and perfectly suited to strengthen our place's leading urban school district that creates equal opportunity and success. So he will help us guide the initiatives aimed at narrowing the gaps between our highest and lowest-performing students, which is some of the most important work we have to accomplish, especially in the upcoming year. Also, one of the new leadership team members that I introduced last, at our last school committee member, who is joining us today is Ms. Jeanette Bales. She is our, she's our parent engagement director, so I just wanted to wave to her. Thank you so much to both of you, Jeanette and her, for joining us here today. So this next slide highlights some of the great things that are ongoing and on the horizon. I'm happy to announce that we have been awarded two competitive grants that will directly benefit our students and staff. So these awards are designed to address very specific objectives, and I do applaud the administrators and teachers who worked with the Budget and Grants Director Shirley Pang in securing these invaluable resources. These are opportunities created by educators for educators. So first, we received a grant of $72,700 to hold intensive one-week acceleration academies in early literacy and math. We will offer these the week of August 23rd to 27th at our elementary schools from 7:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. The Early Literacy Academy is for students entering kindergarten in grades one and two, while our Math Academy is designed for rising third and fourth graders. We will have approximately 50 students participating in each of our elementary buildings, and these will be rigorous and designed to address any COVID-related learning loss. We are empowering our building leaders to recruit students for this in-person program based on data and factors recommended by DESI and its Center for Strategic Initiatives, which is closely overseeing and directing this important effort. Secondly, we received a STEM Equipment and Professional Development Grant from the Baker-Polito Administration and the Massachusetts Life Sciences Center. So this is a substantial grant for $90,976, and we are directing it to grades five through eight. We will utilize the money to buy lab equipment, materials, supplies, and technology to offer professional development. So this will help us to develop a common curriculum and align standards across all of our schools in grades five to eight. And these resources will also allow us to generate more opportunities for hands-on experiments and activities and increase access to rigorous academic programs. We're also excited to be participating in DESI's 2022 Professional Learning Network. So this exposes our leaders to comprehensive and aggressive strategies on how to recruit and retain a diverse teacher workforce. Rightfully, this is a very competitive space, and we certainly aren't the only urban school district regionally or nationally that is looking to make huge gains in hiring and retention. So as a result, we wanted to be ambitious and proactive. So the DESI Educator Diversification Strategy centers around three objectives. The first is to provide tangible financial support and incentives to recruit and retain educators of color. The second is to proactively promote the benefits of the profession to teachers of color. And the third is to improve the experience of students and teachers of color, that they, the experience that they're having in our K to 12 schools. So in the coming months, I will provide updates on the diversification network, which is an integral part of our intention to create a positive and welcoming environment for all of our teachers and students. Finally, the Gen Cyber Program, which is offered at UMass Lowell, will be back in person next July after holding a two-week virtual session this year. And we will have slots open to our students, including transportation. Obviously, details about this opportunity will be shared with students at the appropriate time, but leaders at UMass Lowell announced that they received the grant from the National Security Association for next year, so we wanted to pass along the good news this evening. The Gen Cyber Program is one that exposes our students to the exciting world of cybersecurity, which is an area that experts identify as having tremendous job potential in the coming years and decades, and already does, actually. The opportunity is all the more exciting by the fact that UMass Lowell has renowned cybersecurity education and research programs at their school. So we're very excited to announce that. I wanted to also quickly remind families about financial benefits available to Everett residents this summer and onward. As of July 15th, child tax credits were sent to families in amounts ranging from $250 to $300 per child. If parents and guardians did not receive these funds, they are encouraged to visit findyourfunds.org for more information. The EPS also encourages families who received PEBT funds during the pandemic to apply for SNAP funds at dtacconnect.com. Many residents qualify for, but are not necessarily taking advantage of the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, so we just wanted to remind everyone of it. SNAP recipients receive a debit card that is accepted at numerous locations, and determining your eligibility is really quite quick and easy. So neither SNAP nor, you know, the child tax credit programs or any other programs via findyourfunds.org will impact or ask for your student's immigration status too. So I wanted to mention that in case that is an added incentive or validation that that could be something that you could take advantage of. So thanks to vaccination efforts, we are not seeing COVID numbers as high as last July. We do encourage Everett residents 12 and up to make a vaccine appointment before next school year begins, if they have not already done so. As of last week, 63% of 16- to 19-year-olds in Everett were vaccinated, while 43% of residents between the ages of 12 and 15 were vaccinated. So we are going to be monitoring this number in order to ensure that we're continuing to provide vaccination opportunities to our students, as long as we have students who still need them. So our preparations for next school year are in full swing, and they are very, it's a very long list of things that we are doing. So while we do not have to cope with, you know, the massive uncertainty and drastic contingencies that we did last summer, we are extremely busy nonetheless, and we're moving on several tracks as each day passes on our must-do and want-to-do list. So we're looking, just for the sake of discussion tonight, at six major areas, facilities, technology, social-emotional learning, hiring, teacher training, and vaccination efforts. So for facilities, our facilities department is performing essential work and upgrades throughout the district. So the boilerwork at Madeline English, Caverian, and Lafayette Schools is on track to be completed prior to the heating season, while the air conditioning work at the Caverian School will be completed in mid to late September. Any work that needs to be performed during the school year will be done so without interruption or disruption to our students and staff. At Everett High School, the two damaged cooling towers have already been replaced. Other projects include the renovation of two science rooms at the Lafayette, including the installation of lockers. Two smaller rooms at the Lafayette are being converted into a larger classroom as we continue to look at ways to best maximize our space in a cost-efficient manner. We're installing 26 lockers and 12 classrooms at the Whittier, while a host of torn window screens have been replaced at the Devens. And at the Webster, we're painting the exterior stair porch area, including vision impaired risers. Looking ahead to next year, our staff will continue to maintain the vigilant ventilation practices that were stressed during the pandemic. So all of our heating and cooling systems are receiving regular maintenance, including grease, oil system tune-ups during the current intercession. Air filters will be changed in July and August. Window air conditioner filters will be cleaned or replaced before school starts. All dampers will remain open to allow maximum outside air into buildings. We are going to continue to use the air purifiers that we procured last school year, and we will open windows to the greatest extent possible to assist with airflow. So as you can see where it is under our purview, we're definitely doing our best to ensure that we are keeping up with all of our facilities. There is one area that remains in need of attention, which is the roof of the four classes at the Webster Extension. So we'll be following up directly with the city to make sure those classes are usable by the start of school. Moving on to technology, we do continue to deepen our digital footprint. So starting this year, every student in the district will be offered a Chromebook, not just as part of remote learning, but as part of our educational offerings. We purchased 1,800 of these devices so that we're easily able to replace broken ones, as well as provide them to students who are newly enrolling. The district has procured 200 Dell laptops that will be used for STEM classes and programming at Everett High. We also have six new MacBook carts with 30 laptops each for use by our six elementary computer teachers, because all of them have to move from class to class due to our space constraints, so they have MacBook carts. We are in the process of replacing outdated smartboards with ClearTouch televisions. So we've purchased 89 ClearTouch TVs to date, and we will replace the smart or ENO boards as they fall into disrepair. Repairing existing devices, even if it was something that we thought was of benefit to our students and teachers, is impractical as the ones that we have are old and replacement parts are difficult to find and costly themselves. So it is more cost-efficient to just update our technology. All of our administrative assistants, paraprofessionals, administrators, and teachers now have a MacBook laptop or a Windows-based laptop provided by the EPS. We have increased the bandwidth in our buildings, and we will be upgrading the firewalls in our schools next week. And as you've heard previously, we are in the process of hiring a director to oversee indirect technology at the district level and opening RFPs for vendors who can manage our firewalls, as well as one to provide day-to-day case-by-case help to staff. The EPS is also working with multiple agencies and vendors on ensuring that every student and teacher has adequate internet access at home. So we've purchased 2,500 hotspots with 1,250 still available for distribution to students, families, and staff. Finally, we are also going to be applying for participation in the Emergency Connectivity Fund, which is a $7.2 billion project offered by the Federal Communication Commission. For eligible schools, the fund will cover reasonable costs of laptop and tablet computers, Wi-Fi hotspots, modems, routers, broadband connectivity purchases for off-campus use by students, school staff, and library patrons too. So the overall aim of this initiative is to close the homework gap for students who currently lack the necessary internet access or devices that they need to connect to classrooms. So overall, you know, I'm very happy with the tremendous growth that EPS has made on the technology front. To be honest, the district, when I came in, was not a leader in this realm. The ground we had to make up was long and wide, and it was made all the more urgent by the pandemic. But with every enhancement and investment we make, the EPS, I think, is moving closer to becoming the 21st century district that we should all aspire to. As we think about social and emotional wellness, we're utilizing professional development, guidance counselors, teachers, and staff to best help our students re-acclimate and reconnect when we resume full-time teaching and learning for everybody. So one important element of our strategy is called the Open Circle Curriculum, which will be practiced by guidance counselors and teachers across grade levels. The tenets of the Open Circle Curriculum are worthwhile at all times, and we expect that they will be particularly helpful in uniting our district after what has been a tremendously difficult period. As such, we can expect the resumption of time-tested schedules and traditions that will impact students in various ways. Other elements to our sell-well strategy include daily check-ins between guidance counselors and the students in their assigned classes at the K to four and five to eight grade levels, targeted interventions, and the availability one-on-one counseling, placement of one full-time Elliot Adjustment Counselor in each or Elliot Clinician in each building, the implementation of restorative justice practices throughout the EPS along with the training that is required in order to implement that, peer mediation and student ambassador programs, creation and implementation of new clubs for middle school students, daily lunch groups that will be made up of guidance counselors, peers, and students, anchor charts in every K to eight classroom promoting social-emotional skills and reinforcing our common language that we'll be working on this upcoming school year, school-wide team-building activities and games built into the curriculum in general and our health. and our health and physical education classes in particular, stress mindfulness and strategies like meditation and self-awareness, teaching mindfulness and practicing teacher training on strategies such as meditation and self-awareness, which helps to reduce anxiety, integration of social-emotional learning into our art and music classes, establishment of guidance goals for students, especially those on IEPs, increased efforts on family and student engagement and outreach to every member of the community and wraparound services for students and families, which could range from counseling to help with food insecurity to navigating immigration concerns and to understanding things such as the special education process and 504 plans. Hiring and educator training are also a significant part of the lead-up to any school year. So our interview and hiring process is ongoing, and it involves more people and a more deliberate process than previously practiced here. So far, we filled 16 of 55 open positions in our schools with more offers to be extended in the coming days, as well as more interviews as well. As for teacher training, our one-week orientation for new staff will begin on August 23rd with a comprehensive human resources workshop led by our HR Director Frances Canty. Participants will be introduced to our district and school leaders, and they will learn about EPS processes, benefit providers, and the district's evaluation system. That week also focuses on curriculum resources, meeting the district's instructional leadership team, collaborating with department and content leaders, understanding the district's core values and how they're reflected in our instruction and our culturally responsive practices, and meeting with their assigned teacher mentors. In addition to providing professional learning for our new teachers, we will also be providing learning opportunities to our school and district leadership and even a menu of voluntary sessions to our teachers right before the start of next school year. Finally, we have and will continue to focus on our vaccination efforts in advance of our full return next month. In March, the EPS partnered with the Cambridge Health Alliance to provide COVID-19 vaccines for teachers ahead of their return to in-person instruction. We also partnered with Archipelago Strategies Group, Tufts Health Plan, and the East Boston Neighborhood Health Center to offer mobile vaccination clinics to students and their families and community members. Once students 12 and above were approved to receive the vaccine, we teamed up again with CHA on a vaccine clinic for EPS middle school students. And we are currently exploring the possibility of hosting incremental COVID-19 and flu vaccine clinics throughout next school year. In addition, DESI has actually several suggestions, too, for increasing vaccination participation, which we'll also be hearing more from them and will be exploring. These include outreach and promotional efforts in home services, community meetings with health experts, and transportation assistance to vaccine sites. So as we get more information about that, we will certainly be implementing it and passing it along. The city has also been no less aggressive in extending vaccine opportunities to our residents. Everett is currently partnering with Curative to offer mobile Pfizer vaccine clinics. The latest of these are scheduled for July 22nd from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Swan Street Park, July 29th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Glendale Park, and August 5th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Meadows Park. And all participants will be booked at these mobile sites for their next second or subsequent appointment. And the Pfizer vaccine can be administered again to students between the ages of 12 and 17. And finally, I'd like to end with a word on the paid summer internship program we launched at the administration building this year. So our offices on Vine Street are greatly benefiting from the presence of six EHS students we have working with us. Kayla, Sam, Nick, Samaga, Jaslin, and Gabby are smart, talented, personable, and utterly conscientious about their tasks and responsibilities. And this is just a small but meaningful example of addressing our goal of providing authentic learning opportunities and experiences for our students. So with us here tonight are two of our interns, Samaga and Kayla, who would like to speak about their internship experience with the school committee. So I respectfully ask that the school committee invite Samaga and Kayla up to share a few words with us.
I can motion to invite both students.
Second.
Okay, sorry about that. Motion made in second to bring forth this listener on top of the experience. Can I have a real call vote, please, Madam Superintendent?
Mr. Robert Zeng?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yeah, saying affirmative. Students, welcome.
Hi, my name is Samaga. Yeah, we were just, we just wanted to talk about our experience as interns. And we have been working for a while now, and it's been amazing. All the staff members have been truly amazing. They check upon us, and they always ask us how our days happen. And currently, we're planning on events for late of summer towards the school start week, where we will have Orientation Week for the whole K through 12, also preschoolers as well. So that'll be really exciting and something that you guys should look forward to as well. And it's been amazing trying to plan community events along with trying to get to know how things are done in the deeper level. Before, as students, we didn't really get to see what was going on behind the scenes. So as interns, it's been amazing to have that experience and that ability to know what's going on behind the scenes. So it's been amazing, and everyone has been truly amazing. So we just wanted to come on here and say that we're really... Oh, sorry. So yeah, we just wanted to come on here and say that we're really thankful for the opportunity. And I'll pass it on to Kayla.
Yes, I agree with everything that Samaga said. I know me and my other interns are so grateful for this opportunity and to be able to participate in our community and actually have a say when so many other students have yet to even step into the building is amazing. We are definitely exploring our options right now and trying our best to serve the community and our families. And we just want to thank our superintendent and W Superintendent for giving us this chance, because we have had many times in the past where we wished things to be different. Yeah, we didn't have the chance to do so. And being able to sit here and talk to you all and just talk about how this experience has been going so far is amazing. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you so much. And so that brings me to the end of my update. And so if you have any questions for myself or the student interns, now open it up for that.
Hello, Ms. Lambert. Question? Your name is...
My question was for the superintendent. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify. So in your slide, it's on August 31st for grades K through 12. Typically, the first day of school at the high school is just grades nine. So would 10 through 12 be starting on September 1st, or has that changed?
So we will actually be bringing in our ninth graders for an orientation on the Friday before, which is August 27th. So we're doing orientation a little bit differently this year. It's going to be kind of like a celebration, too, and not just, you know, sort of a day of school. We will still have them oriented into their daily of school, but we wanted to, and I'm glad you bring this up, because we wanted to kind of make it, you know, momentous and fun this year. So it will be an orientation day that will have both academics and social components.
Thank you. And just a suggestion for, you mentioned that you're evaluating the summer programs. I would recommend reaching out to families, not just the ones that participated in summer programming, because I think just the short turnaround time may have been a hindrance to some people participating in being able to, you know, because it's a half-day and because some of the locations weren't close. So my suggestion is just if you could reach out to families for feedback on not just why they participated and what they liked about it, but also those that didn't participate and how we can maybe overcome those obstacles. And then I just had a short plug that the P E B T card is taken at the Everett Community Growers Farm Stand Saturday mornings between 9:00 and 12:00, right, on Broadway in Everett? So anybody that's gotten theirs, they can use it there for fresh produce. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murray.
Thank you. I just had a couple of logistics questions or a question and a suggestion. My question is, with the air purifiers, do they need any sort of maintenance before the coming school year in terms of filters or cleaning or things like that? And my suggestion was about the vaccine clinics. Moving ahead, it seems likely that boosters will be necessary next year. So I think when we're thinking ahead, we should probably be considering how and where we can facilitate students and families getting boosters to the vaccines that they've already gotten, because I don't necessarily think that we're out of the woods completely yet. So, thank you.
Thank you. And yes, to answer your first question, we will be replacing filters, because they do require replacements. So we will have those replaced and ready to go by the fall.
Okay, Mr. Barris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is actually for the two interns out of the administration building, Kayla and Samaga. I'm very happy to hear what you've been learning and helping with. Could you give us some examples of some of the projects that you are working on that you are going to... You do not need to announce. Might be something that is a surprise, that you are preparing for the students who are going to be coming in for the new school year. But is there any way specifically that you have worked on or kind of some examples that we could have an idea of what you are preparing for the new students coming into the school?
So yeah, so we're actually planning on having a student orientation week. So some of it is going to be for the preschooler parents. That way, they get opportunities to get used to the school system. And also, there are going to be parts where it's going to be for the K to 12. And then there's going to be that part for just the ninth graders to 12th graders that the superintendent was talking about, the orientation. We're also planning on working on that as well. So it's going to be a week-long event, and it's going to be a mixture for almost all grade levels. So it's going to be the social aspect of it and try to rebuild that connection between our students and the families.
Excellent. Okay. So programs for students made by students. This is terrific. Thank you. Thank you both. And all the other ones who are part of the program as well. And thanks Superintendent and Depp to Superintendent for bringing this innovative and amazing idea. So thank you.
And next, I have Ms. Cadella.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very huge to Madam Superintendent. Going back to one of the programs you spoke about, I really don't remember what it was called, but I wrote down it was an August program. It's going to be 7:30 to 12:30, and it's for COVID-related learning loss. And there are going to be approximately 50 students in each of our buildings.
Yes, so...
We got a big grant for that.
Yes, so that is our Acceleration Academy from DESI. And more information will be coming out about that as well.
Okay, I wanted to know how are these students going to be chosen for this? Is this something based on last year's academic performance in certain areas and that the teachers or principals would be advising parents that these students should be in this type of a program? Or is this something that people just apply for?
So actually, we will be doing, we'll be working with our educators and our school leaders to identify students who we think would benefit from the program the most and be doing specific outreach. If there are, you know, extra slots available, we certainly would keep them open for other students. But it is definitely a program that's provided by DESI to support students who may need some extra catch-up right before the school year starts.
Such a great idea. So did you say that there'd be 50 students in each of the grades, like A, 1, and 2, in each of our buildings? I was trying to scribble down notes as she was saying it.
Sorry, I think so. I think it's 50 students overall in our elementary buildings, but I can check on that. So, but there are different programs, too. So we have the Early Literacy Academy, which that's going to be for students specifically from kindergarten, kindergarten in grades 1 and 2. And then we'll have a Math Academy that is specifically designed for rising third and fourth graders. So currently, it's 50 students altogether, and it's just really K to 5. So it's not incredibly expansive at this point. But we are, again, since we're at the early stages of getting those students, we do want to work with our school leaders to see, because we imagine that the need may even be greater. We also just don't know what the demand is going to be at the same time, because it is the week before school starts, and we are running a lot of programming this year. So if there are a lot of students that have been identified and not only identified but are willing to come, we would certainly explore how we can support that.
Thank you very much, Madam Superintendent.
Ms. Tapper Zay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the superintendent. Madam Superintendent, in terms of the school calendar year, you mentioned a maximum of five snow days. With our technology and how we do things, are we still potentially looking at snow days?
No, we're actually waiting on DESI for that. I would say that I think we've become expert at being able to manage these days remotely. And even before COVID happened, they were already piloting programs. Like, it was, there was a Snow Backpack, I forgot it had a catchy name, a program that they had started to create for snow days so that students would have take-home work. It wasn't even as tech-savvy as what we actually have. However, we have not received any official word about whether or not that will be allowable. I think one of the concerns, again, if I'm to speculate, because this was one of our issues even last year in calling snow days, is whether or not certain cities or districts will, if they have a snow day, will there even be connectivity? And then I think that that may sometimes, you know, if there was some sort of blanket rule, that could then impact some communities more than others. So I think it's something they're still exploring, and I think most superintendents are hoping they err on the side of allowing it and then allowing us to kind of figure out the connectivity issues and figure out how we can support students, because that would certainly be ideal. But at this point, we don't have word on it. I will certainly let you know when we do.
Thank you. Okay, I see Ms. Lewis has raised her hand. Ms. Lewis?
I believe Ms. Lewis on mute.
Can you hear me? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Madam Superintendent, for their presentation. So I was just wondering, where do families find more information about, like, the programs, sign-ups, et cetera? Is that coming as the day goes? Or is that on a certain place where they can access? Or is there, like, specific people they contact, et cetera?
That's a great question. So for the programs that are ongoing right now, you can actually still contact a school principal or a family liaison. So really, anybody you contact within the school system does have information about programming and support you with those programmings that still have availability and that are still currently running. For some of the more specialized programs, such as the one for the 200 incoming ninth graders, there's specific outreach going out. So there was an email that went out to all of the enrolled incoming ninth graders. But that's why I mentioned if there are families listening who didn't get that email, to please reach out. But I think the best rule of thumb is always to reach out to a school leader who will be, or a family liaison who will be able to get you in contact with the right registration process. The registration process this year was actually quite simple. Families really just had to show up. And so we were trying to make it as easy to register in the middle, but, you know, as we're trying to point people to the correct programs, it is a little bit more complicated. So we definitely would encourage you to reach out to your school leader.
Okay, thank you.
And there's also... And there's also information on the website. But you know, we're working on, there's, there's so much information on the website. And I do want to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, I say a lot, it's on the website, it's on the website. But we do know that we need to make the website more streamlined. So these things are easier to find so that these things that are, you know, top of mind for our families are the first ones that pop up. It's actually something that we're working on is our communications director, Dave O'Connor, is actually working on revamping our website. And so when the new and improved one comes out, we hope that it'll be a little bit more easily navigated for families since there is so much information on it.
Okay, on the report of the superintendent, any other questions of the superintendent or of the interns? Okay, thank you. Next item, please. And I'm sorry, the interns, you could be excused, leave at any time you want. Thank you.
So at this time, I would like to respectfully request to take an item out of order, which would be the subcommittee report from finance and negotiations as it refers to item number two under the report of the superintendent.
I'll make a motion to move subcommittee report number one out of order.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. So motion made and seconded to suspend the rules and take item number one on the subcommittee reports, which is the Subcommittee of Finance and Negotiations. Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On July 7th, the Subcommittee of Finance and Negotiations met in executive session to discuss the negotiations with union personnel. And as such, we voted to recommend favorable action and approval of the MOA between the ETA power union and EPS to the full school committee. I make a motion to accept the report.
Okay, so there's a motion, there's a motion to accept the report and seconded. And on the motion, Ms. Cadella?
Thank you. I through you to Ms. Lambert. On the bottom of page one is there a mistake on the name on the seconded by person?
There most certainly is. Can we? I will make a motion to amend and strike the name of Ms. La Monica and replace it with Ms. Lambert.
Second.
Sorry, be with me. The more I'm muted, the less buzz there is. So from the electricity, not from my voice. So the motion before us is to amend the finance report by deleting Ms. La Monica and replacing with Ms. Lambert. It's been made and seconded. Can a roll call vote please on the amendment?
Yes. Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, eight in the affirmative, zero negative, you have amended. So the motion before us now is to accept the report as amended and place on file and refer it to the, to the body in support of item number four on the report of the superintendent. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Out of caution regarding any potential conflicts, I'm going to recuse on this item. Thank you.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, 70, the affirmative. One abstention. You referred this, accepted the report and referred it to the full body. So I'll make a motion to go back to the regular order of business.
So moved.
Okay, motion made and seconded to revert back to the regular order of business. Roll call vote.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, in the affirmative. We have announced the regular order of business, which would be item number two of the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. So item number two is the request to accept the draft or the draft version of the school year 2021, 2022 calendar. Please note that this is the calendar that we will be distributing. It's a draft because it is subject to change as we continue to meet with the ETA for negotiations or as snow days come upon us.
Favorable action on the request.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. I'm sorry. All right, let's see these questions. Ms. Cadella?
So that was still up from before, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the superintendent. Just to point out, it does say August 31st, first day of school for K through nine, half day. And then September 1st, full day for K 12 on the bottom of the district calendar.
Okay. Is that the newest one that came out today? Sorry. We can. Okay, we'll certainly look and make sure we did send out an updated version right before this meeting. As there, we did find a few discrepancies. But I've made that note and if that is remaining, we will change that.
And we did have this item referred, not this specific calendar, but we did have the school calendar referred to the Equity, Inclusion and Diversity Subcommittee. And that has not met yet. So because this is a draft, if any input, because I do want to make sure that stakeholders are heard. I'll do my best always to speak for people, but it's best if we hear from them. And so I just want to make sure that we can make any adjustments as needed.
Absolutely. We wanted to get this out because we've been being asked about the first day of school. So we at least wanted that information out. But we not only would love input on the calendar itself, but also the calendar that I mentioned that will be going out to teachers. That's kind of guidance on the what to do's and what not to do's for certain holidays. We would also like input on that.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, so the motion before us is to accept the school year calendar for 21, 22. Can roll call vote, please?
Ms. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Eight in the affirmative, you have passed the, the calendar.
Thank you. Onto item number three, which is requesting approval for the use of the Lafayette Gymnasium for the Everett Women's Volleyball League. So the Everett Women's Volleyball League has been using the Lafayette Gym for its past four seasons since 2016 and are requesting approval to the, to use the gym for their upcoming season.
Make a motion for favorable, for the approval of the Everett Women's Volleyball League to use the gym.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to grant approval for the use of the gym for Everett Women's Volleyball. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barris? Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yeah.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, in the affirmative, zero negative, you have approved the use to the gym for the Everett Women's Volleyball League. Item number four, please.
Item number four is to request approval of the memorandum of agreement between the Everett Teachers Association, the Unit D Paraprofessionals and the Everett School Committee that was just referred by Ms. Lambert.
Vote for favorable action.
Actually, I'm going to recuse myself in the chair. Mr. Panarisi? Would you be the chairman for this particular item? On number four, please. But before you speak and vote, I do want to thank members of the negotiations team, which is Ms. Lambert, Ms. Sarni, Mr. Panarisi and for a time, Ms. Cadello. Because this MOA between the Paraprofessionals finally brings fairness to those, those employees. So I will excuse myself on, on this item. So, so yours, Mr. Panarisi.
Okay, so number four, once again, request for approval of the memorandum for the agreement between Everett Teachers Association, Unit D Paraprofessionals and the Everett School Committee.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
So the motion is made and seconded, all in favor. And we'll have a roll call vote.
Or Mr. Abraze?
I will abstain from this vote.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Sorry, I'm continuing to recuse.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
He's excused.
Oh, excuse me. And and is, did Mayor Di Maria join us?
I don't see that. I do not see that.
Okay.
On my screen. So is that five in affirmative on motion passes?
Excuse me, there is, I do see iPhone Carlo on there, if that's. I just noticed.
Okay.
Do you want to just ask him?
Mayor Di Maria?
All right. We'll move ahead with the motion passes on number four. Back to you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Panarisi. Next item in the business, number five, panel superintendent.
Thank you. Item number five is request acceptance of the FY22 Summer Acceleration Academies Grant for $72,700 as presented in the update. The purpose of the FY22 Summer Acceleration Academy Grant is to support implementation of an in-person early literacy academy and/or math academy during the summer of 2021.
Move to accept the grant?
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to approve the grant. Just, let me just check, I want you just to check attendance real quick. So Madam Superintendent, I do see that Mr. Di Maria is online. So if you can add him to the roll call. So roll call, please, on item number five to accept the grant for $72,700.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria? Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, eight in affirmative, you have accepted the Summer Acceleration Academies Grant. Next item, please.
Thank you. Item number six is to request acceptance of the Project Lead the Way Grant for $5,746. The purpose of this grant is to offset the costs associated with the PLTW Engineering Program at Everett High School.
Move to accept the Project Lead the Way Grant for $5,746.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the Project Lead the Way Grant for $5,746. Can a roll call vote, please, Madam Superintendent?
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria? Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, eight in the affirmative, you have accepted the Project Lead the Way Grant. Next item, please.
Item number seven is to request acceptance of the STEM Equipment Grant from MLSC for $90,976. So again, as presented in the update, this grant from the Mass Life Sciences Center, or MLSC, was awarded to help prepare students for life sciences careers by enabling schools to purchase lab equipment, materials, supplies and technology, as well as to provide teacher professional development that supports the implementation of advanced curricula and standards alignment.
Make a motion to accept the STEM Equipment Grant?
Second.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action to accept the STEM Equipment Grant. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria? Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, eight in the affirmative, you have accepted the STEM Equipment Grant. Next item, please.
Item number eight is to request acceptance of the Growing Literacy Equity Across Massachusetts or GLEAM 6 to 12 Grant for $114,000. This DESI grant was awarded to help support the evaluation, selection and implementation of a high quality core curricular materials for ELA and literacy.
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to accept the GLEAM Grant. Just one question, the superintendent, have we ever, have we ever received this grant before?
Not to my knowledge, no.
All right, thank you. So with that, we have a motion before us to accept the grant. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria? Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, eight in the affirmative, you have accepted the grant. And last item on the report of the superintendent, number nine, please.
Yes, finally, item number nine is to request acceptance of a donation of 1,800 books from the Park School. So a student at the Park School in Jamaica Plain, Jamaica Plain, his name is Devon Ugglerwell, ran a book donation drive as part of a service project that he coordinated at his school. And while originally meant to be a modest drive, Devon's community, school community responded overwhelmingly and donated EPS 1,800 titles that range from grades pre-K to 12. We are currently going through the titles to determine what will go in classroom libraries and what will be made available for students to take home and keep as part of their own home libraries. So as we see with our own students time and again in our summer programming with our interns during school year, it's amazing what our young people can accomplish when given the time and space to explore their talents and passions. So thank you to them for that.
Request the acceptance of donation of 1,800 books and a letter of thanks to the Park School.
Second.
Okay, motion has been seconded to accept the donation of 1,800 books from the Park School. Can a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine in affirmative, you have accepted the gift of 1,800 books. Roman number six, please.
Roman number six is items submitted by school committee members. Item number one is for central administration to provide an update on the EPS Gateway to College Program for the new school year and an update on the EPS Dual Enrollment Program with Salem State University. And that was submitted by Mr. Barris.
Mr. Barris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, the superintendent, Brad, I believe she will provide an update on both programs. Before the superintendent gives that update, I just want to mention and publicly thank the former coordinator of the EPS Gateway to College Program, Mr. Philip, his French last name, Bruce Joe. He always joked with me that I never knew how to say his French last name. Terrific employee who recently retired from the Everett Public Schools, who led our Parent Information Center before. who led our Parent Information Center before, was a huge advocate for our students, for communities, low-income families, immigrant families throughout his life, including working with me to achieve the homeless student program that we have at Everett High School to assist our homeless kids with rental assistance. So if he's watching us, probably he's not, because I'm sure he's enjoying his retirement. I just want to thank him for everything that he has done, not only in the Everett Public Schools, but at his time at many nonprofit organizations in Malden and throughout the state, helping low-income families.
Thank you. So yes, I'm happy to provide an update. So as the committee may be aware, the Gateway to College Program is tailored for students who are overage and undercredited to receive their high school diploma and to obtain college credits at Bunker Hill simultaneously. So although this program is offered to all students who may qualify, it is definitely geared for students who prefer to accelerate their path in obtaining their diploma to go on to higher education. So we generally have approximately 14 students enrolled. Last year, six students graduated, and six more students are enrolled for the fall. To ensure that we provide the necessary support so that our students in the program can be successful, we do provide a staff member, as Mr. Barris just mentioned, who can provide a seminar course for students, create student schedules, check in with students, and serve as liaison with Bunker Hill. And additionally, we as a district provide assistance with fees for Bunker Hill, lunch, transportation, and books for students. Like Mr. Barris, I would like to thank Philip Bronder and Giraud, I don't know, hopefully, I said that okay, who retired in June, for the skill and dedication that he directed to the Gateway to College Program. While we could never replace him, his role will be assumed by our re-engagement specialist, who we are currently hiring, who will be responsible for identifying students at risk of dropping out and students who have dropped out in the past several years and plan student-specific intervention strategies to support students as they transition from traditional schooling to an alternative online model in order to fulfill graduation requirements. With regard to dual enrollment with Salem State, we offer one course at the high school on financial literacy. And last semester, we had 20 students participate. We will continue to offer this opportunity next school year, and we will also keep the school committee apprised during the school year with information on this opportunity for students, as well as any further ones as we try to expand and enhance our dual enrollment program.
Thank you, Superintendent. Have we renewed the contract with Bunker Hill Community College for the EPS Gateway to College Program? I know that it was about to expire.
I believe so. However, I, if it has not come before, I don't think it has come before this body yet. So I believe it will need to come before this body, but we do have every intention of rolling it over.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Mrs. Superintendent, on this matter? Okay. As a sponsor, Mr. Barris, what's your pleasure?
I could make a motion to send it back to your sponsor.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second to refer this matter back to sponsor. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria? Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, eight in the affirmative, you refer the matter back to sponsor. Thank you, Mr. Barris. Item number two.
Item number two is regarding open meeting laws, and I will now turn it over to Chairman Parker.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So on this piece, as you know, because you've been copied on every one, there have been a number of open meeting law complaints, alleged open meeting law complaints. This information is being channeled for myself, the superintendent along with Ms. Canty. We have been in conversation with the Attorney General's Office, and we were granted an extension on, to address all of these complaints. So with that, tonight, I would simply ask that you would vote to allow me and Ms. Canty to address those complaints and submit a response to both the Division of Open Meeting along with the complaintee. So, so with that, I would ask for a motion for favorable action from the floor, as opposed to me making it from the chair.
Okay, rule action, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, so the motion's made for favorable action on allowing Ms. Canty and I to, to respond to the complaints. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria? Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
I actually had a question. I had my hand up, but is this only pertaining to the open meeting violation complaints that are already in existence? Or will this be, would this be for future violations as well? That, and if it is for future violations as well, would we still be kept abreast of violations as they came in? How would that work?
Okay, good question. So if you, when you take a look at the, the complaint, I think it's like the last page, it actually shows you what the four different steps are, which is, you know, notify, meet, you know, respond. So therefore, this is only for the existing complaints. The process would be moving forward is what we experienced, was when a new complaint comes through, you would get copied. We would discuss it in an open format. And then, you know, we would come to some type of conclusion as far as how to respond from there.
Okay, thank you. In this case, my vote is yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, eight in the affirmative, you have moved favorable action on the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three is request for the Everett School Committee and Central Administration to grant permission to the Everett Community Growers to utilize a school kitchen to create a local cooking show. And this, again, I will turn over to Chairman Parker.
So this is a request of the Everett Community Growers. They have reached out to Witten's, because Witten's offers a community program, I think it's called like Uncle Elmer's Farm or something like that. And so they've had some conversations about utilizing a cafeteria kitchen to make a cooking show, promote healthy cooking, to take the items of the growing here on Broadway or at Delmon Tremont and showing people out there how to take it, you know, from, literally from farm to table. So with that, I think it's a great idea. You'll probably see someone like Rosa Di Maria telling you how to cook mustard greens. And from what I hear, they're fabulous. So with that, I would ask a motion from the floor, someone can make a motion from the floor to refer this to the superintendent.
I'll make a motion to recommend this to the superintendent, favorable action.
Second.
Okay, motion's made in second for favorable action. Item number three, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria? Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
I think it's a great idea, yes.
Mr. Parker?
As long as I get something to eat, yes. Eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, you are taking item three and referring it to the superintendent.
Can we go as a guest?
So with that, the only remaining item I believe we have on the agenda is number eight, bills and payrolls.
Correct. Roman numeral eight is bills and payrolls.
Okay, cool.
With that, I will make a motion to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,105,518.20.
Second.
Sorry, I was just looking at the amount, it's so small. The, the point is, is that without school, you know, the special education, general funding and tuition amounts are in transportation are really low, and that makes the difference. So with that, motion made in second to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,105,518.20. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine in the affirmative, zero negative, you have approved that amount. Ms. Lambert?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,105,518.20.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,105,518.20. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria? Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. The mayor's back on. Do you want to be recognized for the vote to pay bills? Okay, thank you. So we have approved to pay bills in that amount. Nine votes in the affirmative. Next and last item of business, adjournment?
A motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made in second to adjourn. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine in affirmative, you have adjourned. Thank you all for your time tonight and your attendance. And we will have one more meeting this summer, which will probably be the Monday before the start of school or the week of.
It would be August 30th, the day that staff returns, and then we'll have the next one on September 7th, which is the first Monday in September, or Tuesday, it will be Tuesday because of COVID.
So mark your calendar, enjoy the rest of the summer, and we'll see you in a few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.